We're there, so tell me when we're ready, John.
Go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead. Thank you for doing that, Jeanie.
Steve, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely.
And Bruce, would you mind giving the prayer?
Welcome, everyone. We are convened in Iron County Commission Meeting on the twenty-fourth of June two thousand nineteen. This time will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Steve Platt and Bruce Anderson will offer opening prayer.
Follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we humbly gather today as community of Iron County. We pray that Thy will and Thy blessings will be passed down to us, and we thank You so much for all that we have. We're thankful for this beautiful area that we have to live and the freedoms that we enjoy, and we ask that You would help us protect them freedoms and that we'll be able to make this place better than we got it. Father, we thank You for all the blessings we have, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you both. Okay, um, we'll start with department reports. Guess Chad's not here yet. I assume he's on his way. So, uh, Steve, we'll start with you.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
He's not. He's in the Philippines. His son's got married over there. Filipino. I think he'll be back late this evening. Uh, oh, I'm glad you mentioned that. Uh, I'm sorry I failed to mention that Commissioner Cousins is absent today and excused as he's in the Philippines. His son was married there, uh, last Friday, I believe, so.
Okay, a quarterly report. I've highlighted commissioners what I want to talk to you about. My list is getting a little bit shorter. And I've also included on the last page the important items which Curtis is going to be working on through the next two or three months. So, uh, number one, our budget's on track. Number two, Sunset Subdivision, the assessment area, we have a live one. We have a good bid. We have an assessment area formed. They have needed the roads to us. Reed will be talking to you today about financing. I'm hoping that can all come together. I can give a contractor a notice to proceed and we can start work. Alton Coal, it's just sitting right now, Commissioner. We don't know, uh, haven't been able to talk to the owner or, uh, know exactly where that is, so that's just sitting pending.
I'm hoping that, uh, he'll be coming to Saint George soon. He promised to call us when he did.
He did, didn't he?
Hopefully we can meet with him soon.
Yeah. The Forest Service is giving us money for two bridges, uh, just off of one forty-three, the first left-hand and the second left-hand canyons as a result of the Bryanhead Fire. Those will be, they have done the design work. They're getting the stream alteration permits from the state water engineer, but those will be constructed in September, October, and November of this year. So all the preparations are being made for that.
So will provisions be made for the roads to be traveled on during construction or?
We will have a detour, yes, for both roads.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, the EWP for Paragona, a million dollars. That's, uh, still coming together. But it should be, I hope, construction completed by the end of this year. We'll be doing work at the mouth of Little Creek, some on the Red Creek Channel. And, uh, as I have further details, I'll let you know on that unless you have questions. Okay? The Parowan Watershed Protection and Flood Prevention Operations Project, that's several millions of dollars worth of work which could be done. All of the EA is being done on that. And, uh, they're getting to a point that maybe in a month we can have a meeting and talk about Summit, Parowan, Paragona, and Little Creek, and the work that will be done in those drainages. Cedar Valley Belt Route Alignment, we're, I think, down to the very last change, which Reed will talk to you about today on another agenda item, but we're getting close to that. Item number eight. After ten years, FEMA has said, "We don't think we've got it right. We haven't used sound science. It won't pass our quality review process. We're gonna start over." So, that floodplain mapping project, uh, will start over. They want to have a meeting with us in Cedar City on July the ninth in Kit's office. You're welcome to attend if you'd like to, to find out what they are going to pro-propropose as far as, uh, sound science and more, how they're going to begin that.
Do you have a time on that meeting?
Yes, it's from one to two thirty, Commissioner. I might mention while we're talking FEMA and flooding, I'm related to report that the water from Coal Creek is clear this morning. It's less than a hundred CFS, so we're out of the woods as far as all the high water off of Cedar Canyon. I wish I could say as much for Parowan. It's still an ugly muddy, and it's still running, and I don't know when it's gonna quit.
It got dirtier a week, ten days ago than it had been, yeah.
But I'm hoping most of the farmers have been able to get their hay up and they're gonna be using it for irrigation. And we need that channel to dry up because there's a lot of work we want to do in it as far as removing sediment. As we have in Little Creek, we want to remove a lot of sediment in those channels and, uh, Red Creek. So, so we need to do that. Hope Canyon, we've also got work to do out there. When, uh, timing is right, we have the machine available. And RS two four seven seven, uh, haven't heard much about that lately. Neither have I. To my knowledge, they've taken no depositions in the last three months. But Tyler Farling, who is the, uh, guy employed by the state of Utah that did drive all the roads again with a GPS that rotated three hundred and sixty degrees on the top of his vehicle, he's continuing to work at his home to get all that data in position so it'll be ready for a court case. Then on the last page, I've just listed what Curtis will be doing. I don't know if you have any questions about any of that. If you want to talk, I'd be happy to entertain questions.
You told me about the culverts at Eagle Rock.
Did.
You might explain to the public what happened there and, uh, and up here at our retention basin.
Okay.
Parowan Canyon, holy moly.
We had a huge, uh, hole, if I can say that, at the Parowan gravel pit at about three hundred east and four hundred south. All the runoff that has come this year has completely filled that with beautiful, clean washed gravel. And as it's passed that and gone on down the ditch, as the ditch gets, the slope gets flatter, it deposits all this material. So out towards the freeway, we have a channel that's filling up. And we need to clean that channel and clean the Parowan gravel pit so we're ready for the thunder showers, which we know will come in late July, August, and the first part of September. It's amazing how much, how much sediment load that water will bring with it.
It is, it is.
It's absolutely amazing.
The fire made a big difference in that. There's some, there's nothing to hold anything back. It's starting to grow back. So is there any chance of getting private interest in there to get that gravel out of there? I mean, it seems like it's gonna be.
I haven't explored that, but we maybe should try.
Because I think, I don't know, we'd have to talk with Parowan, of course, but I know in the time that we've worked on making that bigger, we've allowed private people to go in and.
Yes.
Gravel, so.
And when Curtis was there, they just wanted him to load him, and he loaded several private entities.
Yeah, so it would be good to get some help to haul that out of there.
Would, absolutely. And maybe the state of Utah still needs more along one forty-three between here and Bryanhead.
Amen.
So I'll explore that, Commissioner.
Thank you.
So you can see from that list that Curtis has a big load.
Yeah. Number thirteen, Wind Hollow Rip Rap Downstream, what exact area is that?
Wind Hollow is the drainage, uh, from Bravets across Old Ninety-One.
Oh, okay.
And we do need below that structure. We build a, a concrete box, oh, gosh, thirty years ago. We do need some rip rap below that. I put in your box about a month ago, Iron County, two thousand eighteen Class B funding. I don't know if you had time to look at that, if you want me to go through that today.
If you want to take a few minutes and go through, I did have time to look at it, but if you want to take a minute.
Okay.
Go through that.
I just kinda wanted to give you where our money comes from for the roads from Class B and how we spend that money. So where it comes from in eighteen, we got two million, a hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. That's from our Class B funding. That comes from gas tax. Every time you buy a gallon of gas, you pay about forty-seven cents in taxes. About thirty percent of that comes back to local governments. Seventy percent of that goes to the state of Utah. It's distributed to the counties on, for paved roads, we get, uh, five for gravel, two, and they increased recently for dirt roads, two. So it is distributed in nine, in nine parts, so if you take that total funding and divide it by nine, then for a dirt road, we get two times that, which you can see is, uh, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty, thirty-seven dollars per year. Same for gravel, because dirt and gravel are each a two, and five for paving is one million, two nineteen, et cetera. So if you take that mileage or that money and divide it per how many miles of type of road we have, you can see that they give us basically, in theory, forty-seven hundred dollars every year, every year per mile for paved roads, eleven hundred and seventeen dollars per mile for gravel roads. And this is what's amazing, when they doubled that, used to be one, but now it's two, sixteen hundred and ninety dollars per mile for a dirt road. How do we spend it? On chip sealing, it costs us about twenty-three thousand dollars per mile. We chip seal the road every seven years. So that means we chips, uh, spend about three thousand, three hundred dollars per mile per year, excluding painting, that's on the pavement. On the gravel, I just assumed that we put an inch worth of gravel on a road every ten years, and that comes out for materials of eight hundred and fifty-five dollars, and then the grading time is there listed in the grader and the hours and how many times we do it. So it comes out that we spend about two thousand, two hundred and five dollars per mile per year on a graded road. And the annual cost on a dirt road, we only spend two hundred and seventy dollars per mile per year. And the last page is the bottom line. They give us, you can see from Class B dollars, those amounts, and Iron County expenditures, I've made some assumptions, but that's about what we spend per mile. And obviously, we gain a lot on dirt. We gain a little on paved, but we spend more on gravel than they give us. But it all comes out in the wash. I hope that's helpful.
Good report. It is helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Steve. Chad? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Apologize for being a little bit on the late side, but boy, this weather break is it picked up.
I imagine things are starting to roll a little faster than they have been. Yeah, oh, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Anyway, so with the weather and half the big one for us and our, then all the departments that I supervise, the big one is the building. That's always exciting and fun to watch and be involved with. As of the end of May, we are within five permits of what we was at the same time last year as the end of May. However, in reviewing this morning for what we have in the queue and the number that has been permitted so far just in June, we are gonna be a little bit ahead by the end of June, so. Building does continue to thrive in Iron County. We're happy for that. One of the big things of planning and zoning and staff has been working with is the urban farming ordinance. As you know, there was some legislation passed in, uh, state legislation, not this last one, but the one before, to permit and encourage urban farming. One of the things that we would like to take advantage of in Iron County is because of the perks and, and breaks that it will give those that do participate in that urban farming. So we are struggling to write an ordinance. We've been working on it actually ever since the legislation passed. So we've been working on it for over a year now. However, we're still quite a ways apart in opinions across the county on that. Even amongst staff, planning commission, and county commission that's been involved in it, has had a lot of, uh, a lot of, a lot of distance between us. So we're working real hard to bring that together and meet somewhere where it's acceptable and meanable for all of us. Um, one thing that we do have is a lot of confidence in the planning commission. They are very diverse. They are very knowledgeable. Most of them have lived in this county all of their lives, and they do know the county, not only geographically, but economically and every other wise that you can think of. Therefore, we have the confidence that by the time we bring this ordinance to the county commission, it will have been thought out very, very extremely well, and the planning commission will give the best and utmost recommendation that, that they will suit the county as a whole. So look forward to that. You can be involved if you'd like, but that has been a little bit of a challenge for us last year. Speaking of, uh, the planning commission, as you know, we did give a recommendation for the belt route. It's on the agenda today. We continue to work with the commission to bring that to, uh, to fruition because we, that is a great planning tool that is gonna be needed as we do grow it in order to have that right away in place when the time comes. So we do appreciate you there, and I know you'll talk about it more today. Some more things that we have been working on in planning commission. Is the Cove Mountain, as you know, we done, we're just finishing up their land use permits. And they actually are moving so fast on both one and two. They were just gonna do one, but at this time they are starting to submit plans for building permits on both one and two. So we are excited to have the, the, uh, solar still going in Iron County. We think it's a great thing. We hope you do too. If not, direct us in another direction, but we're really pushing solar in a lot of different ways. Some more ways that we're pushing solar that we're kinda proud of, that we want to notice the whole country of, because if you went to the Energy Summit, we were talked about a lot in Iron County due to our participation in solar and our, our, uh, adaption that we have done to the, to the solar industry is we are going to put in some recharging stations at the Vista Center. Most of it's gonna be done on donated money, the solar companies and so forth, of realize the importance and, and stuff of the solar. They want us to be able to educate the public on it, and we felt like that is a great way to do it. So you will see some recharging stations pop up at the Vista Center here, we hope, before the end of the year is what we're, Reed and I and Lester have been working on. And now that the building was, uh, re-roofed last year, we're also exploring with some of that same monies and maybe a little bit more that the commission did approve, it's a little bit of, it's gonna be county money, is maybe a little bit of solar along the south side of the Vista Center where it's so visible and will always be visible. It's against that creek. Nobody can build between the creek and, you can see it forever there. So just to let them know that Iron County is very green oriented, that we do know that that's, uh, important. We are exploring that end of it, and hopefully that will work out.
Where will you locate the charging station specifically?
Right now, we're, we're talking with a, with a power company and all so forth. We're probably gonna go down the north side of the parking lot, right there by the museum. As you notice, there's some transformers right just barely off the asphalt and that curbing right there. Because we do own that still over to their fence. We own quite a ways past that curbing, and so we can run all of our utilities and stuff through there to get to it. It's what we're finding. So we're kinda excited about that anyway. For good or bad, we're still working with, with several group homes. Right now, there is one that is that close to submitting an application to us. It's okay to right on the border of Parowan City limits right out here. We've been working in Parowan City for the last six or eight months trying to encourage them to adopt, to annex that area so they can regulate the group home, but they have turned it down now. They say, "No, we're just not ready to do that due to their infrastructure. It's just high enough on the hill. Their infrastructure is just not adequate to supply the, the required water and stuff for it, sewer and water." So they have turned it down, so that one's gonna be coming to us here, I bet, within the next thirty to sixty days. Another huge one that is, we've been working with and exploring for the last few months is Blaine Hoffling. As you know, he got into this when he kinda left and quit practicing law. And he is looking for locations to put in, and even bigger ones than he's ever had before inside the city limits, so.
Was he talking about building or finding a place to lease or?
Uh, right now, he's looking for somewhere that's already built out. What, the way that the state and our ordinances are set up, they're, and we're, we're extremely good. We regulate them, but to the best we can with what, we're tied a little bit, you know, with our hands due to ADA and Fair Housing Acts and stuff. So it's more advantageous for them to find places that are already, uh, built out with lots of bedrooms in them, with maybe lots of guest houses on them or whatever, then they can increase their numbers that way. Which should trigger another thing for you there, Commissioner, that that's the reason that we have done some changes in our ordinances and land use on housing in the last three or four years. Okay, um, some of the things that we're gonna do, uh, on, back to the solar for just real quick. So we're looking for departments within the county that's willing to utilize. There's none in here really that could real easily, but to utilize electric vehicles to be able to wrap them. As you know, we came up with a, Reed, Reed is, Reed came up with, I shouldn't say we, but Reed. Reed and I worked the most on it, and we've drug, then we have dragged Danny into it recently with economic development. But it's to wrap the cars, the county cars, with a solar theme and stuff, and you've kinda heard about that in the past, but I don't know if the public has. The other thing along planning and zoning is, is as people do get out, notice that there are a lot of violations on zoning. We do continue to receive those complaints and hear them. The sheriffs work with us a little bit to what they can, but it is getting out of hand, and this is the time you really hear about that. We know they're out there. If you want us to change directions, please let us know, but we're only so big, and we'll do what we can on the zoning and planning. We talked about that a lot, our plan in the past. It might be time to, this next budget, to start looking at something different for zoning officers and, and, uh, be able to enforce that, maybe even share specialties. Okay, let's move into building maintenance for just a minute. As you know, we finalized the sale of the Fiddler's Building this last Tuesday. We're quite excited, but that created a couple of extra problems. Uh, one of the big ones is that we need to finalize the contract for George's space there. We appreciate his service to the county, and we certainly don't want to lose him, but we need to provide adequate space for him. We did have to move him downstairs this time. I think you got him moved, didn't you, George? Good, okay. And, but we also need to think what we want to do about finishing the actual permanent space for George in the Public Safety Building. I know we talked about some funding there. Let's keep that in mind. Keep that going if we possibly can. Get him in a permanent home will be nice. We keep moving him around four times in the last two years, I believe, so.
Or I thought it was only three.
Keep that in mind. Um, I mean, this is the fourth that we moved. Okay, lost track. And now that the Fiddler's Building is sold, the courthouse landscaping is finished. We just finished and redone the landscaping on the Vista Centers. You know, it looks real nice.
Looks great, yeah.
Plat, Plat done that. So now we're gonna be seeking bids to, to rebid, actually to rebid, the landscaping maintenance. If you know of anybody, time to watch for those bids coming out. Uh, as far as budgets and personnel go, the budgets will hold up well with any unforeseen breakdowns in the county. However, we do, uh, we have another elevator down today. The state inspectors have been in town the last couple of months, and so they're closing us down right and left. We're really not broke down. They just closed us down at the one at the Vista Center now, so, at the office building. So we're scrambling today to get that back up and going, but Lester will do it, I promise. He's a good man, and he'll get her done. Which, with it so busy, we are lucky to have such a diverse bunch of people in the building zoning planning. As you know, everybody in the maintenance department, the building inspections department holds certifications and licensing to be able to do building inspections. That has saved and kept the building inspections moving very well, or fairly well. However, it has caused the maintenance to suffer a little bit here and there, but it's still a good program. We appreciate, uh, Commissioner, uh, sorry, Commissioner Blake, you were here at the time, but the Commissioners was here at the time, such as Commissioner Adams. Commissioner Brinkoff was a big pusher of that back then. It was a great thing to put us on. We can take our, all the talents that we have then, combine them and put the, the effort where we need it at the time. And it changes sometimes in one day, many times, but it is a good thing. But we do appreciate, appreciate Commissioners. Uh, thanks for working with us. Uh, oh, one more thing is, is back to planning zoning for just a minute. We do, we did receive a grant to be able to put the well in. I don't know if you've heard about that, but they did finalize that for us, it looks like, out to the second mound to help with our prairie dog habitat and kinda increase that so we can work towards getting those delisted, so. Reed, uh, secured that last week for us, it looks like, so it's looking good.
Excellent.
Anything else you need, we'll be, try to help you.
Okay, any questions for Chad? Thank you very much. Okay, uh, Bruce. Preston called. They had some trouble with, uh, the, uh, chip seal, the oil yesterday, or not yesterday, but, uh, last week, and so he, they were hoping to get that ironed out, so he may still make it for his report today, we hope.
Thank you, sir. Oh, you're all right. Thank you.
This, uh, thank you for allowing me to be here. The first report is just that grid report, and that's just a snapshot of what, what we've taken in and where we're at as of this morning. And if you have any questions about that, we can go over that. The, uh, the next one is on, on that other page is, uh, our budget's in good, good. the next one is on, on that other page is uh, our budget's in good, good shape. Um, we had a state inspection and audit on June eleventh and twelfth that went really well, Doug came down for them two days and we went through, he, he goes through our, our program pretty, pretty well, pretty thorough, it's uh, and we passed really well, he was impressed with what we have and what we have done. Um, and you should be getting a letter about that, Commissioner Adams soon.
Haven't received it yet. Anyway, congratulations on that, appreciate the way you're operating out there.
Um, thank you. Um, our second quarter report, as you know, we don't do an annual report anymore, we do them quarterly. And that'll be due on, on uh, July fifteenth, we're, I'm working on that right now. Um, Cody is our new employee that got hired and he and I got to go to Salt Lake City to a landfill personnel training and, he passed the test and did real well. Um, our metal, our recycled metal, the price for metal is way down, maybe you've guys seen it in the news that they're blaming tariffs and all, whole bunch of things, so we'll probably put that bid off, we usually bid that in June. We put that off for, until metal comes back up.
Yeah. It's not like we need the money to buy groceries or.
A lot better idea to wait till the price comes up. So just from January first until now, we have eighty-three new customers or second cans, just in this year, that puts us with mountain cabins and everything, just right, right above four thousand customers, so.
That's a lot of growth, I'd be interested in all it does countywide, that's just county.
Yeah, that's just county.
Tremendous growth.
Yep, and then we, our equipment's working well and doing well. That's really all there, any questions?
Very good. Yeah, I took some, we have scrap metal from our farm and I went to see her the other day with some, metal and the guy, I pulled in there and the guy said, well, it's mostly steel, isn't it? I go, yeah, and I said, where do I get my heavyweight? And he's, well, we don't pay for steel. I sorted out a little bit of, of aluminum and came home with six dollars, so I, and I, I donated the steel, so anyway, I was tickled. Not really, but anyway. So, I think they used to pay for steel, but anyway, I got rid of the trash pile.
I've just got one question, for some reason, this has come up several times lately, what's the uh, projected lifespan of our current dump?
Um, two thousand forty-five, two thousand fifty. We probably won't ever have to leave that location for quite a while, there's places we can go to in that location, but, the engineered estimate is two thousand forty-five and then we flew it last year with a drone, and it increased our, our space because they can't go up them sides. As you go up, it gets bigger, but engineer's projection is two thousand forty-five, two thousand fifty, something like that.
Great. I told them I don't think it's gonna fill up anytime soon, but I didn't have a number, so.
Yeah, it's, it's filling up. It's getting, it's going pretty fast.
Well, and maybe, could you speak to the uh, the reserve that we, we have to keep and, what that may look like down the road?
Um, well, we're in good shape that way.
Yeah.
So that the, the county has to keep a, a closure fund, and that's several million dollars, and we have to maintain that, that area for the next thirty years, once we do close it. Um, and then we've also got an account to open another one, so. We should be, we should be in a good financial position in twenty-five years when it's time to open another one. And we have the location as well, that we can put on, there's a lot of dirt and a lot of area in that same owned place, we just have to permit and get that done. So we're in a good position probably for the next hundred-ish years.
I just wanted to point that out, cause I, I, I think, I think, I'm a little biased, but I think Bruce does a great job managing the landfill.
He does, he does indeed.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. It's one of the most unique on earth, probably to have those old mine pits.
We've been blessed for sure.
When you have to go out on a level piece of ground and dig deep and push up high and, and line it, that's tremendous expanse, so just have those there. Good. Thank you very much for your good work and that good report and not seeing Preston, I was hoping he'd make it, but they are, they are uh, right in the middle of doing the uh, regular maintenance chip seal, the, uh, many of the roads that'll be done, it's been seven years since they were done, they're in a rotation of seven years. And uh, asking about the uh, Vandenberg Road, there's two miles that are ready to chip there. They won't be done during this uh, session, but will be done before the summer's over, so. Those people out there will be extremely happy and then a year from now, they'll be even more happy because it'll be oiled clear to the uh, Sunset subdivision, so, plus their roads within that subdivision will be improved, so that will be, that will really be nice. And it'll open that whole area up to more development, I'm sure, but. Um, do you have anything, Commissioner?
Uh, the only project, I sit on the board of the Homestead Museum, Pioneer Homestead Museum and uh, every year, this is the fourth year of the annual Folk Life Festival. That, we pulled that off just this last weekend and I, I think it was a really good event, the weather was kinda cool and nice and there's lots of folks came out. Have a lot of vendors and a lot of them are, a lot of the vendors, the criteria for being a vendor is to be kind of art centered. Um, then they had demonstrations of, oh, things like rope making and fur trading and, and things like that, along with live music both days. Uh, it was quite a fun event.
Excellent.
Pulled it off and I think it went really well, so it's, that, that's grown over the years and I had a lot of, uh, I worked the information booth.
There you go.
During the event, uh, on both days and there were, uh, a lot of, of people compliment on how the event's grown and how it's, it's become a cool thing, so.
Certainly a well managed park.
Give a shout out to the, to the park and to the board and everybody involved with the, the Homestead and the Homestead Foundation. It was a really good event.
Okay, thank you. We got a little timeline, Henry, do you have anything to report from, from Washington? Henry is with, uh, I was gonna say governor, then president, he almost made president, Senator Romney's office.
He's had a few different titles, I'm still getting used to the, the senator one myself. Uh, thanks for having me, Henry Walton, the Western Utah Director for Senator Mitt Romney. Uh, just a couple of things to mention, uh, Senator Romney is working very hard on addressing our national debt right now. Something that we're all concerned about, you all know that we took in as a nation three trillion dollars last year and spent four trillion dollars. Senator Romney uh, voted against the disaster spending bill that was chock full of uh, pet projects, for folks across the nation, um, and introduced an amendment to that bill, the Budgeting for Natural Disasters Act, which would require the Congress to factor in the disaster spending each year into the federal budget. Right now, the way that it works is Congress is just spending anywhere from twenty to forty billion dollars on top of already appropriated budgets. And that's just new money that's accruing to the national debt, so that's something that we've been working closely on here in the state and in Washington DC. The other thing that Senator Romney is uh, working on very, very hard right now is a permanent E-Verify Act. E-Verify, as you all well know, is, is a program that requires employers in the United States to verify that their citizens, or excuse me, that their employees are citizens. Um, right now, that legislation, right now, the way the legislation is set up is that that uh, program sunsets every six months. And it's something that we've had a lot of employers in Southern Utah struggle with, uh, knowing whether or not they need to use E-Verify, whether it's the law of the land or not. Senator Romney's bill makes that a permanent requirement and puts it into the law of the land, or at least puts it on the way to becoming the law of the land, so that we can reduce that magnet of illegal immigration. Besides that, know that I'm here in St. George, I'm in Southern Utah, uh, driving around, visiting with, with commissioners, mayors, uh, sheriffs and legislators as much as I can and we're here to help you however you need us to. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that report. I didn't realize that E-Verify sunsetted every six months, wow, that's a bit crazy, so I hope that is sorted out. John?
Oh, um, we were successful on the sale of the Fiddler's Building, um, that closed last week. Um, we had just a few more items, really grateful to Chad and his crew for helping me get a few of my election items out of there. I, I actually got, was getting ready for a youth thing this week, this last week and realized I'd left a bunch of flags in the cab of my truck, so. I'll get those from my couch to the courthouse, but uh, but uh, we were, we were pleased to, to uh, to complete that sale and, and uh, I think that'll be a positive step for the county, positive step for that area as well. The owner has already got some tenants in there and he's looking for a few more and being proactive, he's, uh, he's taking the two offices that Nicole and I used and he's gonna prepare those for Ensign Engineering. Um, I think he's gonna move his office in there, so should be good.
I'm glad they didn't find another place before we got that done, it's good to see private enterprise take something and run with it and.
It was a great location and I think, I think it'd be, it'll be a good opportunity there, so.
No kidding, wow, that's great.
Well, and it, and it really, it really worked out well when we had our need with this building, we were able to take advantage of it and, and since we've been able to, dispose of it properly, so.
Yeah, that's good. Well, we had the summer games and lots of people, athletes in our county and it's, I'm glad we have that great uh, event here in the county, as we were just finishing parading around throwing T-shirts, it started to pour rain. And we took cover behind a screen under a concrete, Mike and I and a bunch of others and anyway. So, but, but the show went forward, so it was good.
Come, come up to the microphone, would you, Chad?
Even though that he is uh, able to fill that building with the private sector that easily, because it is private sector, not under any government, I really commend the commissioners for backing my thoughts and ideals on that, it sounds like yours was the same, that, we could've got renters in there, but we honor, respect, the public sector to where we feel we should not be competing with them, I think that's very important and I appreciate your backing on that over the years, cause, over that, since he is having such a hard time, or such an easy time filling that, that we could have, but that was our take on it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, we will, is there anybody else out there that has anything they wanna say? Questions they wanna ask? Of course, you have, we have a public comment period coming up at ten, but anyway, we will take uh, uh, well, we'll have, actually recess until ten, but we'll be right here, straight up at ten, back to, to start again, we have to, we can't take, do any of these public appointments, start at ten until ten, so uh, we will be back at ten.
Okay, we're back as promised, ten straight up. Welcome back. We'll begin our public appointments with item number one, public comment period. Anyone who would like to come forward and make comments from the public, you're welcome. Please state your name and there's a three-minute limit.
My name's William Presgrove and my comments have to deal with what we started out with today. We started out with a pledge of allegiance to a republic, which is one nation under God. Then we have a prayer to that God, and that God is the one that gave all his children free agency. And then I feel that we are violating our own oaths, so to speak. It's become a little bit hypocritical because in our code, it took it away from me. In our ordinance, under, there it is, applicability, ordinance or code seventeen point zero two point zero four zero. Under B, it says, "No building may be erected, or no existing building shall be moved, altered, or enlarged, nor shall any land, building, or premises be used, designated, or intended to be used for any purpose or in any manner other than as allowed by this title or amendments thereto, and as allowed and authorized by any other provision of the Iron County Land Management Code." Tell me where my agency is there. As an individual, I have no agency. I have to go to the county to get everything approved. I sent out an email to the commissioners and to John Whitaker regarding this. I got one answer back. Nobody else bothered to even touch this. It's not that this commission is the one that perpetrated this, but this commission is the one that can put a stop to violating my inalienable rights to the liberty to use my property as I see fit. There are other avenues to pursue which will ensure that I live by the golden rule as well as my neighbor, because I don't want to do anything that I would not want my neighbor to do to me. This does not give me the agency that I am supposed to have to do with my property as I see fit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there others of the public that would like to comment in this meeting? Scene nine, we'll move to item two, review and continue discussion of the Cedar Valley Belt Route alignment study, and we will receive, it's not a formal public comment period, but we will receive any public comments on this during this item that anyone may have. Reed Erickson, our county planner, will be presenting this item. Welcome Reed.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Just want, while John is bringing that up, I just wanted to review a couple of things in relation to where we are in the process. You recall, we had this on the agenda last time, and we've evaluated a couple of areas on that belt route that we wanted. John, if you go to number seven, and then to the top one, their recommended alignment, no, the top of number seven, first one, recommended alignment.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. There you go. And then zoom in just a little bit in this area. Does this pointer?
Like I say, I don't think it works very well on the TVs. We haven't had success with it as a pointer.
Yeah, it goes on the, there it is. And then, John, if you'll just go a little bit down here into this other area off to the left, down, further down right in, yeah, this area right here.
We've got it on ours. We have it on our personal screens up here.
There's two areas that we're still kind of trying to sort through because we've had, as we evaluate it more closely and look at it, trying to determine exactly what the best alignment is, we've had some feedback, and as we mentioned last time, we had changed that alignment just a little bit to right on the pivot that's in the center of the picture there that you can see. Prior, the alignment went, what, that does not show. I'll just walk to the board. The alignment, after it came up past the solar farm right here and made this turn, it came more this way, right through this area right here, and you can see that there's a home on this lot right here. This lot's getting ready to build a home. There's a home here, 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 and here. And as we got through and you go out on the ground in that area, which the consultants really hadn't done, and as Steve and I went out there, and I went out again the other day and looked, there's a lot more development in this area here than there is in this area. This is all agricultural production land, everything under production. There's no agricultural production this way. There are homes right here, two homes and a home here, but they're a little further away than what these homes go through here. And so as we weighed that out and looked at the alternatives there, we tried to determine really where the least impact residential and the existing agriculture was, and determined that that northern alignment is really a better route in terms of future and opportunities for development currently, and the impacts that it has on current development. The other area of concern is just down further on the south end. John, if you'll go down to where it comes off of Highway fifty-six and crosses the railroad track right there, that section right there. Let me walk back to the board. You can see here that this follows the alignment that has been on the board for a long time on the map, fifty-seven hundred west, going straight through as it goes from fifty-seven hundred west down. The other option to consider that we've tried to evaluate is to continue off this further and come up this side of this turf farm that's currently a turf farm, come across at a little better angle, cross the railroad tracks through here, and then swing back up onto fifty-seven hundred again. That option just creates more residential conflict right here. There's one residence right here, a white industrial, so there'd be less conflict there. The trade-off here is really, you know, the turf farm versus residential. There are two homes here that are fair, this one's right on this road. If we bought these lots, then you've got two homes right here, and so you'd be right between four homes that are fairly close. And so it would create some conflicts with these roads, the intersections, and still believe that this is the better route, even though it does have the conflict with the turf farm in the future. So I just wanted to throw that out. Those are the areas that we really need to decide on. Staff and the consultants feel strongly that this is the best alignment right now. But if the commission wants to evaluate, you know, other options and have those considered, we want to make those part of the story map so that when we're through, it's on the story map, it's on the website, it's the way it's going to be going forward. And we think that we've kind of gotten to where we need to be now. You know, I recognize that Commissioner Cousins isn't in attendance, and he's the one that's most concerned about the area down through the turf farm and going around on that side. Recognizing also, you know, that there are the residential impacts there. It's just which one you give priority to. And as we've done throughout the whole alignment in trying to figure it out, our priority has been to existing residential, to try to have the least impact on existing residential. Agricultural pivots and other things have been lesser of a priority to preserve because they can be moved, they have less impact currently, you know, to people who live there, you know, and their livelihood is there, and recognize that, we're not saying it's not an impact, we're just saying that the priority has to go to existing residential because they're there currently, and especially in subdivisions where you have lots and will have more lots in the future, we want to try to avoid those. So that's the reason for the current alignment.
That's a bad pinch point there. It's hard to know where to go, but one remedy, and this could be factored into purchasing that particular part of right-of-way, but they could put two half-swing pivots there, which they cost, one that swings half costs just as much as one that goes all the way around. It's the exact same thing with a little bit different nozzle package, but they could probably continue minus a hundred feet, doing what they're doing with putting, you know, they'd have to move the one pivot that's there over a little bit, which could be done.
There's no doubt it would have an impact on them. You know, just having an operation on both sides of the road, moving back and forth across that road, it's going to divide it, you know, it's going to make it more difficult. There's no doubt about it, so. But the other thing that we wanted to kind of point out is that what we need to keep in mind is that this is a long-term thing. This isn't to accommodate current property owners other than those that we can, the best we can right now. It's evaluating that against the long-term on where a road would be for, you know, a hundred years in the future. It may not be ten or twenty years before we build it, but it'll be there for, you know, a hundred or more years, you know, who knows how long. And it's the really, you know, the long-term benefit to the community that we have to weigh off, and, you know, it's a tough choice because, you know, property rights and what we're trying to do to preserve existing uses and still plan for the future and weigh that off is something that we've tried to balance out when we've tried to determine where we go. The real challenge, or the, I guess more than the challenge is the real need, is that we do this now so that in the future, people know what to expect. One of the things we've heard a lot is if I'd have known it was going to go here or here, I wouldn't have gone there. I wouldn't have built there. I wouldn't, you know, and we hear that a lot. And as businesses come and as people build their homes, you know, we want to get this on the ground and make sure people are aware of what's going on there for the future, even though there's not a current need for it, and we've heard that, why are you doing this now when there's not a current need? And that's the very reason we're doing it now, is because there's not a current need, but we know there will be in the future, and we can do it so that we can try to have less impact on people in the future, and that's really what planning is. So what we're looking for at this point is just continued discussion, and we'll have it on the agenda for the next meeting in two weeks. We'd like to have a decision at that point. We think that we vetted this fairly well and that we've had a public hearing, but at the next meeting, under your direction, I would send an email out to everybody that we have an email address for that has been involved in this process, and try to let everyone know that it's on the agenda for consideration, and, you know, give us any direction that you have at this point on any changes that you feel need to be made. But we've worked with, on the north end, you know, with Spencer Jones on his property of the alignment there. We feel comfortable about everything, you know, all the way through with the recent changes that we've made, feeling that we've accommodated as much as we possibly can, as many as we can, knowing that it's still going to adversely affect somebody.
Oh, yeah.
It's still on somebody's property.
Looks good, but it makes so much sense because we want to purchase right-of-way on undeveloped land as much as possible. When you get into the situation of having to buy homes, it just completely.
This wouldn't require that on this alignment right now. If we swing west off of fifty-six and going out on the west side of that pivot, then I think that that would end up requiring a couple homes right there. But, you know, that's the consideration right now, and I just wanted to keep it in front of you and have any input that you feel like you want to give us direction for for the next meeting. If you feel like we're on the right place right now, just notify people and let them know and get it back on the agenda.
Okay, okay. Well, it will be so important, as you said, to get this codified. So when anyone comes in and wants to build, well, the route's going there, and I guess technically they could still build, but they, but most likely they wouldn't knowing, but if we don't have it in place, then we got a problem.
But what it does is when people get ready to do something, then we, with the Corridor Preservation Fund, have a resource to acquire right-of-way at that time, so that we can preserve that corridor, and then they can develop knowing that that road will be there in the future.
Right.
That's really the goal.
Right. Not well, and I'm sure we're going to move forward like we did on the southern section and try to get as much right of, some people want to donate right-of-way because they want the road through their property and to improve their property, so hopefully we can start to get some of this in the county hands, so it's locked up.
As we've talked about how we go forward and what the next steps are, I think there are two things that Steve and I and the RPO and the planning effort would necessitate. One would be a policy on a access management strategy, to say, this is how access would be managed on this belt route. This is how often we would give access to this road, you know, every half-mile or every mile, or we would set a protocol or policy for the access management on this, so that people know as they develop where access points would occur along the right-of-way. The second thing would be an acquisition strategy and policy, as when we would require donation, when we would, based on developing properties, when we would go out and actively pursue acquisition, and whether we would acquire full width and expect donation of full width, depending on the type of development, and have those things laid out in advance so that as development or opportunities occur, we have a strategy of how we would go forward acquiring that right-of-way. So that we would just say, for instance, you know, a normal acquisition for development requires the donation of sixty-six feet. We're acquiring a hundred feet. Do we say, well, we're going to purchase everything over sixty-six feet, or in some developments, are we going to require the full hundred-foot dedication, or are we just going to say, you know, we'll buy the whole thing, you know, all the way along and not acquire anybody to donate? So we don't, you know, there's both ends of those spectrums, and I think we want to find something that balances everything with everyone's needs and be fair to everyone, knowing how everyone will be treated going forward. So those are two things that we would work on once we get the alignment adopted, and then we would come back and follow up with those so that they would kind of be implementation strategies of how we would.
Excellent. To have that policy in code would make a big difference, yeah.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions where we're at? Do we want to go forward with this alignment? Do you have questions or concerns? Is this the way you want to see it presented next week or next meeting?
Appreciate what you've done, that recent change, and I don't, I don't have any comment.
No, I, there's been a ton of work going to this and a lot of consideration. I appreciate that. Looks like it's about ready.
Okay, good. We'll have it on the agenda for next meeting then. Steve, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I have a comment from.
Just one question.
Question.
If we're at Interstate to Old Highway ninety-one, you have to go clear up to the Summit exit to get on to fifteen. Is there any negotiations or anything working with the state to get an entrance on to I fifteen right there instead of having to go up to Summit?
That's part of the reason that we came into ninety-one here, rather than having the belt route go up to Summit, is that anticipation of a future interchange would put, by bringing the belt route in at this location, it would put more emphasis on the need for the future interchange. But there is no plan immediately, and it's really not the county's function, I don't think, to promote or try to get that interchange built. Some of the property owners were concerned, and you heard last time, you know, give us a guarantee that you're going to put money towards that interchange before you improve Summit. Those are UDOT decisions. UDOT are really the ones, is the one that will be making that decision, and when that comes forward, it's going to require private dollars, it's going to require ENIC dollars, it's going to require participation of somebody stepping forward and saying, you know, we have some money here, we're now ready to put in an interchange.
I'd like to say, this is all quite a ways down the road, so at the other end on fifty-seven, ends up at the interchange of fifty and then Highway Interstate at fifty-one, exit fifty-one, the south end.
Yeah.
So only extends to reason if people would like to have an interest.
Yeah. They can access it along Highway ninety-one right now, but we anticipate that in the future there'll be an interchange there.
We need to get ninety-one from there to.
County is.
We are, yeah.
County does, yeah.
It does need some work, absolutely.
Been down there the last couple days.
It's on the list, so, yeah. Thanks, thanks very much Reed. Are there any other comments from anybody from the public regarding this issue? Please come forward and state your name.
Hello, my name is Peter Thornton. Can you zoom that in above the solar farm on the north side? Where it, right above the solar farm, you can see the four lots that are up there. I'll show you.
Hey, Doc, I'm right here.
Yeah, so we're right here. This is where my house is, is right in here, okay? And I believe right here.
Looks like that house.
Okay, so what we have is forty-five hundred comes up and it cuts across. Down below here is Equestrian Point, Park West, Buena Vista, Mona Vista, Hunter Glen, all these neighborhoods that are all down there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and they're growing, and a lot of people are moving here because they want to go up to this area here, Three Peaks. The fastest and easiest access for them, and funnest, if you will, is a dirt road that comes all the way up forty-five hundred, comes across thirty-six, and then they get into this area here. So I moved here in like two thousand and four, and you would be lucky if you saw one car a week out there. Now we have anywhere from twenty to forty vehicles per day, whether they're off-road vehicles, people trying to get to the dump, people coming up in this area to dump. There is no signage, there's nothing. We're getting trash, we're getting overrun down here. And I'm okay for this road going in, this beltway, but is all it's going to do is give us even more traffic up here, and I cannot get anyone to help us with our road out here. That road is torn up, it's got ruts, and it's hard to even access my own home anymore. So the beltway might be years out. I'm wondering if we can get some help with that road where they dug it up down here and they put the manhole covers in or the sewage line. That was going to benefit the golf course that was going to go in up here, and I believe it probably still will happen in the future. But in the meantime, we have no help, no chip seal, no graders, we've got nothing coming up and down forty-five hundred at all, and we have to fend for ourselves out there. The ranchers used to try to maintain the road, but since they put in the sewer lines, you have the manhole covers that are raised, and their vehicles clip the manhole covers. If they clip it, it destroys it, it's costly for them. They're held responsible, so now they won't touch it. They won't do it at all. So we're kind of doing our own thing, trying to get in and out of there. But in the meantime, the whole area is being overrun with just off-road vehicles, people camping. I've got squatters. I've got people living up in these trees right now in their campers. They've got, you know, their home sites up there, because nobody maintains this area. It's all owned by the corporation out of Las Vegas that was going to do the golf course, Lynn Laney, J Dean, okay? They still own it, except for Mr. Laney, God bless him, he's not here anymore.
Right.
And last I spoke to that corporation, they said they are going to continue to do that. When the time is right, they're going to run their own vehicles up there and start in on that project. But in the meantime, I'm just asking for some consideration to run some vehicles out there, to put in a layer on top of that road, to chip seal it, do whatever it is, because you're not going to stop those people from coming and going out there. And if it's a better road, at least I can get in and out of my house, and if they would even send somebody up there to manage, maintain this area a little bit better, then, you know, we could clean this up. There's large dump areas in there where people are bringing up their clippings, their reconstruction. When they fix their homes, they bring everything they've got in the back of the truck, and they find a spot in these trees and they just go up there and dump it.
Yeah, and we can do.
No signage out there at all.
We can do something about that with code enforcement. As far as the roads, though the county is not in the development business, so we cannot come in on private land and build new roads. The developer has to build those. Hopefully, if they do that development, they will.
I'm asking for new road to be built. I'm asking for forty-five hundred coming up to thirty-six.
Well, and I shouldn't, I shouldn't say, well, new road being built, or a road that's there that wasn't brought up to county standard. We, our policy is not that we will not bring those to county standard. The landowners have to bring them to county standard, and at that point, then we'll take them over. We talked about the Sunset subdivision this morning. They're doing that right now. They're in the process of this assessment area, and they will pay for the upgrading of their roads, and then we will take them over. So that's our policy.
Well, I feel like the county has done everything to enhance and promote people to experience Three Peaks. They put in the oversized parking, I mean, the campgrounds, the park. They hold events up there yearly, the rock climbs and everything else. So they've gone out of their way to encourage people to come up there. And the easiest way for them to get up there, other than Mid Valley, which is not the easiest road for them, it's right through our neighborhood.
Hmm.
And I consider it my neighborhood. I've had the property since nineteen ninety-two, built a house there in two thousand and four, and I've gotten in and out of there. I raised children up there. They went to all the schools. I got them back and forth down to Park West to catch the bus. When the city, county, or whoever it was came in there and tore up forty-five hundred and put in the sewage line, they put in the water line, obviously, they were anticipating something was going to happen there, which I believe it was all going towards the golf course. But once that project got put on the back burner, everybody took their hands off of it, and nobody wants to maintain the road. The ranchers don't even want to do it because they don't want to clip those manhole covers. So I got no help out there at all, but we've got plenty of people that are being encouraged to come up here and have a good time in the park facility. And that is the road that they take to get there. They don't come up through the solar farm, anything like that. They're not going way out here off of Iron Springs. They're coming right up forty-five hundred. I mentioned the neighborhoods, Equestrian Point, Hunter Glen, Park West, Buena Vista, Mona Vista. Those things are growing like crazy, and that is the road that they are utilizing to get to that parkway. They're not going down Lund and coming up Mid Valley, unless they're pulling a camper or something like that. Even then, they still, some of them are coming through there. And like I said, I have people living out here right now. I don't know how long they're going to be out there. They've been out there for months, and they're using the road in and out of there. You know, like I said, we went from one vehicle a week out there, and that was a rancher, to now we have anywhere twenty, forty, even more vehicles per day. If you put out one of those little counters on that dirt road, right where the Park West ends, the pavement ends, you'll see what I'm saying is true, you know? There are so many vehicles going through there now, and.
You wonder why they don't go on the oil to get to Three Peaks, because there's, the way is there, but I don't question what you're saying, but it's funny that they wouldn't take the oil road to get there.
This roadway is still months, years, whatever it may be, out if the county or whoever has the ability to come out here and fix this small little area of the road so that the ones that are us that live out there can still be able to come in and out of our homes, because everybody else is utilizing that road, and they're coming out there with their razors.
Right.
Their horse trailers and everything else. They've got big, giant vehicles that come in and out of there, you know, and it's not going to stop them. They don't care about the road. They like it to be that way, because it makes it, you know, more off-road for them to get out there and tear it up. But, you know, I live right up in there, and I go back and forth to work, in and out, going to church and things like that. And all I'm asking for is if you're encouraging all these people to come up here and take advantage of this area, you put a sewer line and a water line through there, and now they can't maintain that road, or they won't maintain it, because they don't want to mess it up. You're bringing everybody out there, please, if you could, have just the smallest of the thing. You got a, where that pavement ends, you got a grater that goes down that road, if I'm wherever I'm at here, and it only goes as far as. goes as far as the rancher's gate, the first rancher, he said he was grandfathered in there. And I'm like, you've already got the thing on the road, have him clean up that whole road. He says, no, it only goes to that one rancher's gate, grandfathered in, he stops there, and they don't go any farther.
And we have, believe me, hundreds of situations like that all over the county, and, and.
I don't think it's as unique as what we got here, though. You've got a park up here, you've got a.
Well, I, I understand that, but the county is not, our policy is that we don't go on private land, we don't go on private subdivisions and build new roads, that the, the landowners have to build the roads, bring them up to our standard, and then we will take them over and maintain them in perpetuity.
Are these private roads?
I can't tell you honestly, just looking at the map.
Yes, because I know where the, the.
They're private roads.
So if you block it and you lock it, and we live out there, so we have every right to block it and lock it, if it's private.
You don't own it.
Your, your property line, you can put a, you can lock a gate.
You can't lock it. I, I guess. And they used to shut their gates, and I don't know if they were ever locked, but.
You're saying they own the road?
Yes, they own the property, the road's owned.
Right, and they said that when they put that sewer line in there, they made a.
Now let's clarify that, please. Cedar City put the sewer line in, not Iron County, Cedar City. They have, because that's a transmission line, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five access to those manholes. Cedar City keeps that so that they can access those manholes. They should maintain that. They put a little bit of crushed gravel on it when that sewer line was built, I don't know what they've done since, but if you're talking sewer, you're talking Cedar City. If you're talking the water line, oh, the Water Conservancy did that, not Iron County. So we're mixing up things here with Cedar City, the Water Conservancy, and then you're laying all that on Iron County.
I'm just trying to be a voice.
I just want to clarify.
I want to be a voice heard.
I've got all the empathy in the world for you, I understand what you're going through, and all that garbage that's being dumped up there, I don't know if that's public, private, what kind of property it is, but somebody needs to, if that was my private property, boy, I'd want to know what's going on up there. If somebody dumping on me, I'd stop it.
All that land up there is owned by the company that is going to build the golf course, okay? So they're not here, they're in Las Vegas.
Yeah, they need to, they need to post no dumping, and, and they have the right to, to put gates up, I assume, I mean, I don't know all the.
Who owns the park? Who owns Three Peaks Park? Who owns the?
Iron County.
Okay, Iron County is encouraging people to come to their area. While their, while Iron County is doing that, they're bringing them through the city area, and they're affecting our area out here. I can't get the, the city, once it turns dirt road, they, nobody has maintained that road at all, and they said that they're not going to, even though they took part of the sheriff's land and said they would maintain the road, and they've never done it. I went to their offices, and they said, no, we never said that.
Hmm.
So it's all I'm, all I'm saying is that you're encouraging everybody to come up here, they're coming through that road there, so if you have any suggestions on how I can get someone, anyone, to help us with that road out there, I'd be very grateful.
Well, we just have to go through the private property owners, that, that's our suggestion, and, and if you can get them to close their gate, lock their gate, they may have the ability to do that, or the, you know, if there hasn't been a right-of-way established, they may be able to do that and cut the, off that traffic. But we improved the road, you know, the main road to Three Peaks, and, you know, hoping people would travel that way, but like you say, it's kind of the off-roaders and so on that, that go everywhere, and we have a lot of problems with county wine.
Right here, so they actually go out of their way to go down.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So they just come right through here.
Yeah, so.
All right, thank you.
As far, thank you, as far as the garbage, we do have code enforcement that we try to keep up with, but, I mean, I have an area on my private properties, people, you know, it's an old ravine, and people were dumping in it, you know, and so we've taken action to stop that.
Yeah, they're just saying that's a, a private, private road, right, thirty-six hundred and forty-five.
What I'm saying is, you know, the place the sewer and water is, is on forty-five hundred. If you get the landowner to put the gate at the quarter of forty-five hundred, thirty-six hundred, give you a key, then that would stop them.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a pretty aggressive move, I, I might try it, though.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thornton. Any other comments regarding this issue of the, this project, Cedar Valley Belt Route?
I'm Lehi Alred, so I live at forty-seven thirty-seven west, thirty-six hundred north, and my, my comments are a lot the same as Pete's, we do have a lot of traffic out there, and the only challenge I see with putting a gate and locking it is, when you have sixty vehicles going through there a day, how do you, how do you keep that? And the problem we've seen with gates out there is, the people going out to Three Peaks, a lot of times they'll take their gun and shoot the locks, and just vandalize the gates, get through there. But like Keith said, the sewer and water's been put through there, the road grater comes partway up that road, but, and I've talked to him several times, I says, can you just run your road grater up a little further? Anyway, I, when I got my property, I had to put a, I had to sign a right-of-way agreement, and if we're signing a right-of-way agreement and the county isn't going to maintain it, what is that agreement for?
So that's a, that's a privement easement, it'll, it'll say on your deeds, subject to and together with, but that doesn't make it a county dedicated road like it would be in a subdivision or another situation.
Okay.
There is, like Commissioner Adams said, there is a process through which you can, you can do, do that, but, but that's not something that the county pays for. That was, in particular, that area was developed, I believe in the seventies by Allen Williams, and, and that was what he did, he just put those easements along certain sides of those twenty-acre parcels, and that was so that he could, you know, guarantee access as he sold those, but that was, but those are not dedicated roads, those are private easements, there's a vast difference.
Our building zoning administrator, Chad Nae, has some.
Oh, Chad can.
Don't, don't sit down, we know each other, we work together a lot.
The, the items, and this will help you too, Mr. Thornton, the thing that Mr. Alred here referred to is that statement that says that they will participate in any improvements, just as Commissioner Trice explained to you, that if you brought, if you participated in the assessment area, by, by obtaining a building permit, you, you was, you signed that statement saying, should the need ever arise or created, that you agreed to participate in that assessment, that the commissioner explained earlier, that once that that is brought up to a county standard, fifty percent filled in is another requirement, just because you bring up a county standard, there's a little bit more to that, that at least fifty percent of the residences up there will be built, and it's still up to county to accept. But that's what was actually signed, not that we would take on an obligation, it was just the opposite, that we will not take any obligation on till that time occurs. Right. A little bit?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct, thank you.
Anyway, we, we put together a few petitions, you might say, I don't know if we should turn them in right now, but just.
Yes, yes, please.
Pictures of things that gets really bad out there. And like Pete said, we're not sure where it lies, but we're just asking for help, because it's kind of more than we can handle, and you have a lot of other people going out to Three Peaks, and it's not just, just us.
Right. Okay, thank you both for your comments, we appreciate it, and we will read all these. Did you have something else, Mr. Thornton?
No, no.
Okay, just, just looked like you're ready to say, okay, okay, thank you. Are there any other comments regarding the Cedar Valley Belt Route, proposed Belt Route? Okay, thank you very much, we now leave Iron County Commission and convene as the Board of Equalization, Christine Lauter, Deputy, Iron County Chief Deputy Auditor. We're going to discuss and for review and approval applications for qualifying veterans who have received a late property tax abatement on their home for the tax year two thousand eighteen and/or tax year two thousand nineteen. Thank you, Christine.
Okay, under Utah Code, veterans are allowed to apply at any time during the year for an abatement, and it also gives them the opportunity to request to have the prior year's taxes abated. So that's what these are, these are abatements that have come in since the first part of the year, and that, that abatement has been granted, and any refund due those individuals has already been sent to them, so basically this is just a formality.
Ratification.
Uh-huh. So there are five individuals that, as of today, have requested and received that abatement and refund for taxes from prior years, so I'm just requesting, you said, the formality of the acceptance and signing off on it.
Okay, any further questions or discussion?
No, I would move for approval of aforementioned applications for qualifying veterans who have received a late property tax abatement on their home for the year two thousand eighteen and/or tax year two thousand nineteen.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the applications for qualifying veterans who have received a late property tax abatement for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Oh, okay. Thank you very much, Christine, we will now leave the Board of Equalization and reconvene as Iron County Commission. Item number four, ratification of vehicle transfers from the Sheriff's Department, John, do you have that information?
I believe I do, yep.
Thank you. Or just a sing, just a single vehicle, isn't it?
I believe so, there we go. This was a two thousand thirteen Ford Crew Cab, four-by-four pickup, it was to, it went to Ryan Riddle with Fire.
Okay, from the Sheriff's Office, I entertain a motion.
I would move ratification of vehicle transfer from the Sheriff's Office to Ryan Riddle, the Fire Department.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we ratify the transfer of a vehicle from the Sheriff's Department, two thousand thirteen Ford Crew Cab, to Ryan Riddle, our Fire Warden, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Item number five, discussion in action, proposed lease agreement for the Emergency Management Department and the Fiddler's Building, Reed Erickson will.
This is a result of our sale of the Fiddler's Building, which closed on Tuesday, so that property did close, and we are no longer owners of the Fiddler's Building, and at your request, we petitioned the new owner to lease back one office space for emergency management. It is in the downstairs, he has a, has a small office space and a storage space, equivalent of three hundred and forty-three square feet, he is giving a lease term of one year, and the rent is very similar to what we were renting it for before, with the exception of now we have to participate in the payment of utilities where before included utilities, so he, he's raised the rent a little bit, but we feel like that it's a reasonable agreement and recommend approval of this.
I think it's a good solution to our situation there, I just thinking of the.
The key is to just have one year, there's no reason for us to, but that necessitates a decision on the Public Safety Building, the ECC getting that finished downstairs, so that, really, that's where he belongs and he needs to get there, so Seven Ships, which is the name of their company, wanted a two- or three-year lease, and I said, well, we only want to be in there as short a time as possible, so one year is what we will commit to, and that gives the commission a year to make a decision.
Well, Lester's getting the figures, Lester is honing the figures better, so we're starting to get more interested in how we can do that without spending, breaking the bank.
Well, we definitely need to do it, so that we don't have to continue renting.
We do, and thanks for, for negotiating that for one year, and, so, is there any other discussion, or?
I would move for approval of the lease agreement for Emergency Manager, the Emergency Management Department and the Fiddler's Building for no longer than one year, hopefully much shorter.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the lease agreement for the Emergency Management Department and the Fiddler's Building, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Have we removed our signs, for sale signs, or they, I guess that's in there?
Well, yes, essentially, yes, we left it there, and then they put another one up over the top of it that says, space available.
Oh, they're using it.
It's all they're using our.
Okay.
Posts, but it's theirs now, so, yeah, we're.
Very good.
It's been changed.
Excellent, thanks.
If we get a phone call, we won't sell it again.
We won't? That could be real profitable, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, item number six, discussion in action, potential lease agreement, Daughters of Utah Pioneers lease renewal for museum space in the Iron County Visitor Center, also presented by Reed.
This has been a lease that has existed for twenty years, it started in two thousand and nineteen ninety-eight, actually, was the original for twenty years, and expired in two thousand eighteen. So we are renewing that lease essentially, so I just took the old lease agreement and changed the dates on it, and that's what you have in front of you, they're interested in continuing that same arrangement, and so I don't think that anything would change there.
Excellent, I think that's, that's a great addition to the.
Provide a good service.
I think it's, yeah, probably has a, I mean, I, I love going in there, but I think people probably from outside the county get a lot of good from that, and there's a lot of.
They do get a lot of visitation, especially where it's connected next door to, to the Homestead, Frontier Homestead Museum State Park, and with the visitor center, so it's a good location.
We have such a rich history in this county, and we like to show it off a little bit, thankfully we have some of those artifacts and so on to, to perpetuate that, so.
Well, I would move for approval of the lease agreement for the Daughters of the Utah Pioneers lease renewal for the museum space in the Iron County Visitor Center.
Been moved and seconded that we approve renewal of the lease agreement for Daughters of Utah Pioneers and their space, museum space in the Iron County Visitor Center, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you, Reed, and another, don't go away, as you know.
John, if I can interrupt, John, when you get that signed, will you give that to Maria Twitchell? She will further the signatures through the Daughters of Utah Pioneers, yeah.
So I just signed, okay.
Do you want?
This one, do you want my signature and my title here, there's just kind of this blank line on the, on the lease agreement.
Uh, go ahead and sign it, and I'll type the. He'll do the title.
Okay.
Unless you want me to make up the title, I could. Chief Mugwump? No, we'll, we'll add your title there. That's a big lead. Thank you.
Item number seven, discussion and possible approval of a contract for professional services with the law firm Gilmore Bell for the preparation of necessary documents in the bond financing process for assessment areas in Iron County, also presented by Reed Erickson.
With your permission, I'll talk about number seven and eight together. These are for professional services regarding the bonding of the Sunset Subdivision special assessment area.
That's fine.
Doing the roads, and so the, the legal counsel, the, the bond counsel is Gilmore Bell, who would actually prepare the bond documents, the legal documents for the bonding. And then the item number eight is George K. Baum, who is the financial advisor that we've been using, and as you're aware, in the process of advertising, we've put out an RFP and anticipate doing something on the next meeting on July eighth about that. So this is just a one-time shot, just for their services, this is not an ongoing municipal advisor agreement, but just for the services of providing bonding in, in the. but just for the services of providing bonding uh in, in the figure of a million dollars for the special, the assessment area for Sunset Subdivision. So that's what both of these agreements are, are just engagement agreements for this project only for the bonding of the million dollars for Sunset Subdivision.
Okay, and these um costs for these two uh individuals, companies, uh where they figured in to begin with. So the Sunset Subdivision realized this is going to be rolled into.
This will be part of their cost. This was the fifteen percent county overhead that we added to the uh construction estimate so that they anticipate covering these costs.
Okay, okay, good. I had that worry that we were going to say, oh, here's more expense, so.
No, that's the purpose of the fifteen percent county overhead.
Okay, perfect. All right, is there any other questions or discussion?
On number seven, I'd move for approval of a contract for professional services with the law firm Gilmore Bell for the preparation of necessary documents, the bond financing process for assessment areas in Iron County.
Second, uh, let's, yeah, let's just do one at a time. Let's do them separate. Uh, second, um, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the contract for Gilmore Bell regarding the assessment areas uh bond financing specifically for the Sunset, or this, yeah, specifically for the Sunset View Subdivision, or Sunset Subdivision. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Then I would move for approval of a contract for professional services with George K. Baum and Company, investment banking firm to service financial advisors in the bond financing process for the Sunset Subdivision Assessment Area.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the contract for professional services as George K. Baum regarding the um financial advisor for Sunset Subdivision, as stated in the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. All right, Reed, we'll let you take a rest.
So I have a question.
Steve, yeah.
I have a contractor that's ready to work. May I give him a notice to proceed?
The, I was just seeing if uh, um, Dan, Dan was here. That, that is entirely upon the county to decide whether they want to front the money uh for the payment of that or bond first. There are two options there, and this is something that we should discuss in relation to these contracts. And so I'm glad you brought that up. With an assessment area, there are really two ways to do it. One is using the current estimates that we have based on now uh financing costs, construction, contract. And if we're confident in that, we could say, let's go ahead and bond for those, that figure based on the estimates that we have. Probably the preferred, uh, that way we would then have the money to pay, to pay the contractor as we go. Uh, this is a ninety-day contract, and we're anxious to get him started as soon as possible. So if we wanted to bond first, we would want to probably delay the uh notice to proceed until we had, we were further along in the bonding process. The financial advisors, George K. Baum, Matt Dougdale, that you know, uh, is in the process of soliciting proposals. And we have had some positive feedback and interest in somebody buying those bond, that bond. And so um it, it's probably, you know, a month away before we could close on a bond. We'll have on the next agenda a parameters resolution to approve for the bond saying, this is what we're estimating borrowing, this is what it's for, this is the anticipated term, the interest rate, et cetera, et cetera. And, and we could bond at that point. In the event that we had cost overruns that um were unanticipated and there was additional cost than what we had estimated, then we would have to go back and assess those properties additionally for the, for the added money. What the, the people at the subdivision and the bond council and what we would all propose to do is to have the county cover the initial costs of paying the contractor um first, cash flow basis out of the county coffers and bond at the end of the project so we know exactly what the costs are and we're not going off of an estimate. So that then, when we're finished, we have a solid figure. This is the final cost. And then we bond and then we assess the properties. It's just a matter of whether or not the county is comfortable in using our cash flow to pay that contractor until we bond. The challenge for the, for the assessment area is that we know what the interest rate is now. We don't know what it'll be in ninety days, but we also don't know exactly what the costs are. So assessment areas are done both ways. It's preferred, and Dan was comfortable in saying, let's just cover the costs now. Our cash flow is good. We just sold this building. You know, we've got the money to pay this contract. We could.
Dan Jessen, okay, you're talking.
Yeah, Dan Jessen. I'm sorry, and Dan Brenner, Bremer, Bremer is the HOA guy. But Dan Jessen said, no, I think we could do it and let's close at the end so that then we know our exact cost. And if, if we needed to, we could charge a small interest rate, you know, for the use of the county's money during that time if we felt like that, we, we needed to do that.
Any problem from the legal standpoint? Okay, and I know we're covered because the, the, we attach it to their taxes if they don't pay the assessment. And, and we don't want to be the heavy-handed county, but, but actually, we're helping them by doing this.
That's the whole point of it, is it's trying to facilitate this process so that we can now get the roads improved and make it a better situation for everybody.
One thing that's locked in, I do have a firm bid, but I realize cost overruns happen, but change orders happen.
Amounts or something may overrun a little bit and it could change the, the figure, so. And we don't know exactly what the final costs on bonding are, you saw in his estimate. Depends on the complication of that. It can run anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars or whatever. So, you know, it would be cleaner and easier it, for us to bond in the end after we've incurred all costs.
Okay.
But, so the answer that I would hope you would give, Steve, is yes, go ahead and cover uh, send the notice to proceed. So that's his question, and I think.
I'm fine.
Okay, we're fine. Go forward, go forward.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate taking care of all the details. Item nine, discussion and possible approval of an updated list of insignificant real properties to be sold. Know, this list includes the two thousand and nineteen parcels that were not sold during the May twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen tax sale. John Whitaker, our clerk, will present this.
Okay, so this represents um all of those parcels that were not sold at tax sale, um in addition to uh the remaining parcels that we found um by searching the land records. And so this first bit, you'll see the prices are down to the penny. And that's because that's the, the taxes owing and the penalties and interest. Those are basically the minimum bids that we would have accepted this year's tax sale. If you recall, ordinance two thousand and nineteen dash three says that um we'll list it for that for, for two years. And then after two years, we'll lower the price to three, three fifty. So um, or your discretion. So based on that, these numbers are the numbers from the tax sale. And then down here with these additional parcels that we found, um, most of them are at three fifty. Some are higher. This, this one has two point three seven acres and is listed at eight hundred dollars. That's an acre and a third listed at five hundred dollars. So some of these larger ones have a little bit higher price, but generally, most of them have a minimum three hundred and fifty-dollar price. So.
Okay, any questions or comments regarding the updated list? Looks good, John.
Thank you. We're, we're very, I have to say, we're very happy that this is kind of coming together. We had kind of a bull rush and I've actually had a hard time getting all the deeds prepared. Uh, and so we're, we're hoping that this will help us to dispose of the properties a little more efficiently, a little more quickly, and, and really put them in the hands of private citizens.
Where we want them to be, absolutely. Been good.
Okay, I would move to approve uh the updated list of insignificant real properties to be sold, uh noting that this includes the twenty nineteen parcels that were not sold during the May twenty-third night, twenty nineteen tax sales presented by the clerk.
Second, uh, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the updated list of insignificant real properties to be sold. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item ten, discussion and possible approval of policies regarding personal use of county property, including vehicle use, general equipment use, and computer use. Mike, are you presenting that?
Sure. Um, this is in um response to House Bill one sixty-three from the last legislative session. Made a felony, any personal use of public property beyond a de minimis or incidental use. Didn't, in my view, do a very good job of defining what that means. You probably have attended some meetings since then in which the counties generally throughout the state are pretty concerned about this. We don't want to accidentally have employees become felons. Uh, I mean, does it include checking your personal email while you're at lunch? Uh, can you take a picture of your kid with your county cellphone? I mean, there's just a, it's a kind of hard to know um what they're after. Um, the, I, I think the main motivation behind the law was, or the change in the legislation was, there was clear um law on misuse of county funds. There wasn't really clear in the law, uh, misuse of county property. But rather than be very specific and artful about it, they just kind of were overly broad, in my estimation, on what constitutes a felony. It's kind of ironic, given the general trend to decriminalize a lot of traditionally criminal behavior. And now we're making felons of people that, you know, probably should not be. So that was kind of a background. The law allows, allows personal use if there's a written policy allowing it. And so the county, or, so the county attorney's office um and county's attorney's office throughout the state and, and counties throughout the state have been trying to create and draft policies that will address this issue. So I have sent you um three policies that are as, as drafts for you to review and determine if you want to approve. I just recently sent you two additional emails that have just minor changes, mostly due to grammar. Um, and I sent a track changes version um in, as a PDF, so you could see exactly what was changed. If you like, I can go through each one individually, or what would you like me to do?
Yeah, let's go through each one individually.
So if we go chronologically, let's see, that would be section thirty, which is the vehicle policy. And I'll have to admit that I know the least amount about this one because um Chad Dotson was the one that was taking care of this one. My understanding is that he met with a number of individuals that would be concerned about this. Um, I think there was actually a commissioner that was present when they were talking about some potential amendments. My understanding as to the primary uh change was um covering situations when we may be traveling to northern Utah, um, going to get.
Sorry, are you on section forty-five then, the first?
Section thirty, I'm kind of going chronologically by the number of the policy. And I, I don't have a track changes version of that. And so I, I'm hoping to get word back from Chad on what exactly he changed during our meeting, but I haven't heard back from him yet. So um, you know, are you able to stop and get lunch or dinner? Are you able to see somebody lives off the freeway, that type of a thing? After the meeting, the one other change he did make was referencing specifically the um, the Sheriff's Office has a a very definitive uh or, or more specific policy governing the use of vehicles by their employees. It was determined years ago um that the county at least believed they had a benefit in having those employees drive those vehicles just for the deterrent effect of having more patrol cars out on the road. Um, and so there's a specific policy that applies to the Sheriff's Office that does not apply to others. And I, again, I don't have a lot of other information for you on this policy. I, my understanding, it's fairly similar to what was already in place, just some minor amendments. The next one is section thirty-eight. That's IT resources. I sent um a more updated track changes version of that policy to you. John, let me, let me send that to you right now as well. That should be flying to you right now, John. So section forty, I'm sorry, section thirty-eight, information technology resource. Um, if you have your track changes version up, you can see what was changed. Um, I did work with Jared Wilson on uh, on these amendments. He suggested uh the ones that are in blue. I made some changes in what you see in red. The, so the first change is there is in um B. I wanted to make sure that we were referencing personal use. All of these policies are generally under the guideline that, the train of thought that if, as long as there's um general prohibited things, um, we don't need to try and list every single way that you could use something inappropriately. We're leaving it to the wisdom and knowledge of an elected official or a department head to kind of rein in potential abuses. So I added in, under B one, that this, we're talking about personal use and that it's permitted as long as it complies with the other requirements of the policy. Um, you can see the changes that Jared made to B two right there, that it doesn't require written authorization, but it does require the um, the approval of their department head or elected official. Um, and then I added under, so if you see under three, B three, users of Iron County IT resources should not engage in any action that may, and then a list of a bunch of things that are not permitted. The general idea being you can't disrupt county business and you can't put the rest of the network at risk and you can't conduct illegal activities using the county's IT resources. That's always been there, right?
We can do illegal with our own resources, right?
Well, we're not going to govern the illegal, at least the county personnel policies are not going to govern the, your personal illegal activities on your own time. That'll be up to you.
Sorry.
Whatever other law enforcement agencies worry about that. The uh, so, but in four, E, I added a new provision there that says, what is permitted is any other use not mentioned in this policy, which does not conflict with those items already mentioned in B three that you're not allowed to do. That's pretty much the main change. The other changes were just mostly grammatical and that's about it. That one was not really a lot of concern, just like the vehicle policy. There weren't a lot of changes. So section forty-five is a new policy that's proposed. It's not superseding anything. Everything here would be new. So it says, so let me give you a disclaimer here. Um, again, as I mentioned, a lot of the, the state, and actually, it wasn't just counties or cities as well, were generally concerned about how the, this uh House Bill one sixty-three was going to impact local government entities. UAC was aware of that problem and they compiled a different approaches to tackle um this issue. I, along with Dan Jessen, reviewed, um, and maybe other elected officials and, and department heads did as well. But I know that I worked a little bit with Dan on this. UAC compiled a lot of different approaches to this policy and put them on their website. Um, and they kind of ran the gamut. As you can imagine, the larger counties, their policies were rather detailed and probably, in, in my view, probably not necessary for what we're dealing with in Iron County. Some of the smaller counties were rather sparse in what they referenced in their policies. Others were um, I don't know the more appropriate way of saying.
They were very pointed.
They're pointed in their uh reaction to this legislative change and pretty much it was very apparent in what they wrote, how they felt about it. What I did is I really liked, and I thought what Summit County did was uh pretty much on point. And um I felt that was appropriate to borrow or plagiarize rather heavily um what they did. And so what I had for you there is this new proposed section forty-five is nearly identical to what Summit County came up with. You know, the, the general intent obviously is that the county's property should be used for the benefit of the public. It's not for, you know, making my personal life better. And so it should be used for, for um the public's good. You know, section two point two, public property is owned, held, controlled, managed by Iron County. Remains the property of Iron County at all times, and the privilege to use public property may be limited or revoked anytime by the County Commission or applicable department head or elected official. The authorizations contained within this, within this policy do not grant an employee an inherent right to use. an inherent right to use public property, nor does it grant any expectation of privacy in the personal use of public property, and no individual or employee should have any expectation of privacy while using government resources at any time for any purpose. Again, because it's county property, it's not anybody else's. And so, I don't know exactly what you'd like me to go through and highlight. If you have questions, I'm, I'm happy to discuss it. But section three is kind of what I mentioned before, it's the policy of the county that the county property is used for the beneficial use of the public, primarily used for the purpose of conducting county business. It talks about incidental or de minimis personal use is permitted. Section B, you can see that change that's in red, is that the change that you have, John?
I'm not sure.
Three point one-
This is the PDF I just received.
Okay, well, so there, this came up in, I think commissioners, you, hopefully you have a change, I don't see that in what you have up there, John, but. So it'd be three point one, B, use of public property by authorized charitable or governmental organizations on or behalf of those organizations by Iron County employees may be authorized, and if so, shall not be considered a personal use. So this is where I added something, authorization for charitable use and use in aid of separate government, you add, I'm sorry, and use in aid of a separate governmental entity shall be made by the county commission or the employee's department head or elected official, and should be in writing. So the point of that is, there were some departments that were concerned, well, what if we use some county equipment to help out, Parren or Cedar City, if there's a disaster or a flood, and we just wanted to make it clear, if it wasn't already clear, that that's not a personal use, that can be authorized by the department head or elected official or the county commission.
And by the way, I was in, I was in section two, so second, section three does have your red line.
All right, and as I read that, I could see that the grammar isn't exactly correct.
You want an "of" there, don't you?
Yeah, so I can fix that.
Thanks for putting that in, that's extremely important. We've, we've found that with the Brianhead fire and the resulting floods, and we need to have that ability to go in and do what we need to do and help out.
So, three point one, C, the personal use of public property is authorized in the section shell, so it can't surpass or disrupt the primary purpose of the property in fulfilling the employee's official duties. It can't incur, incur any additional unauthorized cost to the county, needs to be conducted to the extent possible during non-working hours, or at a time it doesn't affect county, right, regular county business. Occur only with or on county property, which is in the employee's possession, because it's necessary to fulfill the employee's official duties. So I wouldn't have any business using the road department's grader for my personal use. That, that grader is not in my possession as a member of the county attorney's office. I don't get to use, just use county property generally, okay? Be conducted in a manner which does not compromise the integrity of public property, consistent with all other Iron County policies. Then D, you can't use county property to make money, so I couldn't have a side business using county property in order to, to make that, make additional money. And three point two, it talks about the county commission is the primary source of authorization, also elected officials and department heads are over the property, or over the employee that has that public property. Three point three has some more prohibitions. Three point four talks about the inadvertent personal use, so that's kind of what we were talking about before, we didn't want to make felons out of people that were, you know, things are accidents. And then section four just talks about its violation of this year, subject to disciplinary action. So, we talked about this policy with, I invited elected officials and department heads to a meeting, and we talked about this, and we went over things pretty specifically, almost every provision, I think. There were a few changes that were suggested, and I made those, but generally speaking, I think everyone was on board with this. I asked, I kind of pulled the elected officials that I could find in the meeting, in the building here today, everyone I spoke with was rig of these. I haven't heard any negative feedback when I sent out an email asking for comment. Granted that I didn't give them a whole lot of time to respond, because we're trying to get this done, because HB one sixty-three takes effect on July one, we're trying to get these policies created and in place before then, and this is our last meeting before that day, so. If you have questions, I'm happy to, to address them.
I don't, you've explained it very well, it's excellent. Mike, do you have any questions or comments?
No, it's clear as mud.
But I'd like to comment that I appreciate the efforts that Mike has made, it's been kind of a Herculean and, and, and under the gun task, and so, and, and I, I don't, I didn't hear any negative feedback, and I don't, certainly don't have any.
Well, and it's much appreciated. I, I know, like you say, some of them were very pointed, I think we all, you know, regarding this new directive, and I think all of us were kind of like, taken back a little, but I think we're, to take a proactive, positive approach and put this in place is the thing to do, and we appreciate the work that's, that's been done.
I appreciate the interjection of common sense into, into our policies to, it's always appreciated. So I would move to approve implementation of policies regarding personal use of county property, including the vehicle use, general equipment use, and computer use.
And would you, it might be helpful if we, you know, mentioned the number by name, and it didn't have that on the agenda, so it would be sections-
Is it just section forty, thirty, thirty-eight, and forty-five?
Yes.
Okay. So specifically, approving section thirty, vehicle use, section thirty-eight as the IT and computer use, and section forty-five as general equipment use.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we approve policies regarding personal use of county property, including thirty, thirty-eight, and forty-five, as explained in the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone who's been involved in that, it's much appreciated. And to be under the gun, to get that done in a timely manner, we appreciate the work. Adrian, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners.
Item eleven, personnel.
Okay, I just have requests for one, new hire, transfer, and, and then some additional discussion on a potential policy update. So, just go one by one in order. The first one is requesting approval for new hire Curtis Cox as a landfill technician, a backfill. The, got a lot of good applicants, and conducted a number of interviews, and Curtis was selected, offered, and accepted. Proposed start date is July first, two thousand nineteen, and again, that's a backfill. Well, I guess maybe we need, do we need to stop there, or do you want me to do the transfer?
Well, let's do A and B, and-
Okay.
We can make a motion on both of those together.
All right, the second one, we just had a position open up in the roads recently, and another situation where we had a lot of good applicants, met with a lot of good candidates. Grant Oxenreiter, an existing Iron County employee, being one of them, just interested in moving from the landfill to the roads department. Mainly, the schedule works out a little better for him, is the, it was kind of the, the factor in, in motivating him to apply. And through that process, he was offered the position and is accepted. We're looking to transfer him from the landfill to the road department on the fourteenth of July. We've worked with Bruce and Preston to kind of coordinate those efforts. Again, with approval today, that will occur. One thing to note there is, it's not being considered a promotion, per se, we're just calling it a transfer, simply for the fact that he's actually going into a slightly lower pay rate, pay value or pay range, and for that reason, there's no, there's actually a slight decrease in pay, we're just putting him in the same percentage of his pay range in the new position as he currently has in his current position, and I've discussed that with him, and everybody's in agreement and, and, and in understanding of that. So, that's why it's being called a transfer rather than a promotion.
Okay, thank you. I entertain a motion on items A and B.
I'd move for approval of new hire Curtis Cox as landfill technician, effective July first, two thousand nineteen, and note that it is a backfill of a vacant position, position. Also, I'd move for the approval of the transfer of Grant Oxenreiter from landfill technician to roads maintenance worker with that corresponding pay change, and that will be effective July fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the new hire in the landfill department and the transfer in the roads department, as is explained in the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item C, under personnel, personnel policy update.
So, this is, we've had some previous correspondents that sent an email with these copies that are also just presented to you, just barely. You have a copy of the existing policy that's titled mentoring, without any highlighted areas, and then the, the one with the highlighted areas that's titled paid administrative leave. Same policy, but just with some updates. This was spearheaded by your prior request, and after a presentation during the last commission meeting regarding the, what was it titled, resiliency, yoga or something?
Yeah.
Resilience, not resilience yoga. So, and we had some discussion, and, and there was a direction given to update our policy to accommodate that. To me, as I had mentioned previously, it meant, it fits under this policy with, rather than creating a totally new policy. But with it, it would encompass mentoring as previously titled, but there's some other administrative leave that, it just makes more sense to me to just to call it a paid administrative leave policy.
I agree, yeah.
Still under section forty. The highlighted areas, if, by comparison, I just highlighted the points that really are, have been updated or add additional language to the existing policy. I thought that'd be the easiest way to kind of compare, to make sure it's what you expected, or to see if there's any questions. A lot of it's just clarifying kind of how the policy is being interpreted now. So again, like, so we've used the mentoring policy on occasion to allow employees to participate in such things as community blood drives. You know, and, and obviously, that's not under mentoring, but it would, under the way it was defined, it's a, we were kind of using that and interpreting under the old policy, where it says, participation in community service programs that meet child, elder, or human needs. So, but we, we just, but to clarify, it still includes the mentoring, which encompasses a lot of, you know, mainly time volunteered in a school setting, or public speaking, like guest speaking, after-school programs, but also just clarifies that community service is a part of that, and I wanted to point that out, just to make sure that it has been being interpreted correctly, and that it's kind of something that can be included as we have kind of, maybe pinpointed it a little bit more. And then you'll see on, under section three and four, those are what's been added, the, under employee, employee wellness, is where we have the resilience yoga added as being approved up to one hour of paid administrative leave per week, not to exceed five hours per calendar month. And the second bullet point, I wanted to point that out too, because it wasn't part of a previous discussion, but just as a, as a personal, I guess, request, that the county include under employee wellness, I think it would be healthy and, and something that would be easy to manage and, and see benefits if we were to include in additional, in addition to the, to the specific resilience yoga, the opportunity for Iron County to, by department, to allow on occasion organized exercise or wellness-related activities that might benefit, again, as long as it's managed correctly and not abused or used in excess, but on occasion wellness could be, it could be the beginning of something that we could develop more into a wellness program that's been discussed in previous meetings.
You could stop, perk, and go for a walk or something?
That's, that's kind of, that's the thought, but again, I wanted to get your input on that, and, and, and again, just toward, it wasn't, maybe if it doesn't grow to, to be in excess, but if something, in a healthy amount, it could be beneficial, I believe.
I think so. I'm, boy, you know, sometimes in the middle of the afternoon, you, and if you get up and go for a walk and come back, you're more productive and-
And I know the presentation last week, it was more geared towards, you know, law enforcement, the CJC, you know, that, that, I know it's more catered toward, and I thought by adding that second bullet point, bullet point, it might more broadly, you know, kind of be more fairly administered throughout the county, rather than, I mean, if that makes sense, I just thought that it, because exercise is, is, you know, yoga's great, exercise is right there, anything that we can do that's wellness or health-related, I think comes back tenfold, I really do. And then, number four, investigation or disciplinary, this is something, it's not really addressed, well, somewhat is addressed under other policy, but paid administrative leave, it's common if we are doing an investigation as part of a disciplinary, a potential disciplinary process, or just something to where there are events that require us to put an employee on, on leave, in most cases, it's paid administrative leave, so I just wanted that to be addressed, since the title itself is paid administrative leave, I thought it makes sense to, to add that section as well, so.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, work on this. Any further comments or questions from anyone in the room?
I'd, I would move to approve the updated Iron County Personnel Policy, section forty, currently entitled, currently titled mentoring to include approval, to include approved administrative leave for specialized employees' self-improvement classes, for example, resilience yoga as discussed in our prior commission meeting.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we approve updated Iron County Personnel Policy, section forty, as explained in the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I, I should have mentioned too, just so that, you know, that, at the same time, I emailed you a copy, it went to all the department heads, it's just, it's kind of been standard practice. I know it was a little late in the week, last week was a little, little hectic, but I, I did get that out kind of later in the day on Friday, and, and so there was an opportunity for it to be reviewed. I did hear back from a couple of department heads that just didn't have any, they just said that they reviewed, it looked good, so, just wanted to say it wasn't done without the opportunity to review or receive outside input, so.
There you go, thanks very much. Adrian? Okay, non-delegated items, any prairie dog matters? Any, I guess we heard that we got, you got approval for the water, for the well out here, so-
WRI.
Great. Boy, WRI is a wonderful, done tremendous things in this state, it's just been wonderful, watershed restoration initiative. Anything on county boards? Anything, anybody else I have to bring before this meeting that you can't, because it's not on the agenda? No, any? All right. Chair declares this meeting adjourned. Thanks all for your participation.